I'm so excited to cast my vote in the city tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I hope it's a positive experience. Um, I have started the recording as well, so I don't forget to turn it on when we're in session, so.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay. Okay, I think I'm ready on this end when everyone else is.
I think everybody's here that's going to be here. So at this time, we'll call the city council special meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Jermaine.
Present, City of Monroe.
Lamar.
Here, City of Monroe.
Felder.
Present, City of Monroe.
Whitman.
Here, City of Monroe.
Echo Angeli.
He's excused.
Vining.
Here, City of Monroe.
Mayor Clark.
Present in the City of Monroe.
And the clerk treasurer, I am here and I'm in the City of Monroe.
Thank you. To say, Mr. Pasto, we have a special meeting here with the request for a closed executive session. Remember, your mute here audio is not working. Appears to be still not working. No, so there's item is closed executive session for land acquisition and labor negotiations. Mr. Buds, I'm looking you, but I think we just need a motion to go forward, correct?
That would be correct, Your Honor.
Okay, very good.
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Vining.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed executive session for the purpose of labor negotiations and land acquisition.
Second.
Support by, or sir, motion by Councilwoman Vining supported by Councilman Felder to go into closed executive session for the purposes stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Jermaine.
Yes.
Lamar.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes, in that we received the invite for that from Mr. Sell, so if we could zoom over there and see us shortly. It looks like we're all back, so need a motion to go back into the special. City council.
I make a motion to go back into the special city council meeting. Regarding land acquisition and legal links.
Most by Councilwoman Moore, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine to go back into open session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Lamar.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Echo Angeli.
I is excused.
Oh, sorry, Vining. Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark, I'm sorry, Jermaine and Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Hands are on sheets as we're probably all aware by now, so.
Oh, that's okay.
Hiccups like that. Alright, so we're back in open session.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make it a motion, a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Witness, or by Councilwoman Moore to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamar.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes, so that means adjourned. We had on our schedule this evening, a city council work session. Due to time, we're going to reschedule that, but we still need to hold open and close for the reasons. So I need to, this time I'll open the city council work session meeting scheduled for today. Clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, Councilperson Lamar.
Yes, here, present City of Monroe.
Uh, Felder.
Present, City of Monroe.
Whitman.
Present, City of Monroe.
Echo Angeli.
Excused.
Vining.
Here, City of Monroe.
Jermaine.
Here, City of Monroe.
Mayor Clark.
Uh, present City of Monroe.
Alright, and the clerk treasurer is still present in the City of Monroe.
So as stated, we had an item regarding city property conveyance requests, and I know we received that information documentation from the city manager. Due to our previous call session, we are going to not discuss the item on the work session agenda. Will be rescheduled at a later date and come back for the council and to the public, so, Mr. Pasto, if there's nothing further. I know he's having some communication, so I'm gonna move. Yes.
Okay, yeah, nothing else to add, thank you.
Alright, very good, and just, so we just need a motion to adjourn.
Oh. Do we have to do a motion, or can you just say we're adjourned?
You're right, thanks, I'm getting my meetings mixed up, so we do not need the motion. So this time I'll close the city council work session, but want to give the clarification why, and why we're not going to discuss today. So we're right about the moment, so I'll give a minute here to get everybody set. And then we'll go give one minute here before we go forward and make sure the clerk are ready to proceed.
I could just have one moment, Your Honor.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I think I'm ready. Yes, ready when you are.
Thank you, it is 7:31 at this time, we'll call the city council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamar.
Present, City of Monroe.
Felder.
Felder.
Alright, I'll go through the rest.
Sorry, I ran to go get a glass of water.
Okay.
You guys really did mean a moment.
Right, Whitman.
Present, City of Monroe.
Echo Angeli.
He's excused.
Uh, Vining.
Present, City of Monroe.
Jermaine.
Present, City of Monroe.
Mayor Clark.
Present in the City of Monroe.
Clerk Treasurers, present City of Monroe.
Very good.
Um, so the next item is the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Guiding, guide our working together, give us wisdom to make the right decisions, your understanding to listen to each other, and your compassion to promote the peace and welfare of the residents of this community.
Thank you, and if you'd, please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Of the United States. And to the Republic, for which. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. Thank you.
Um, so the next item are any amendments to the agenda.
Uh, Councilman Lamar.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd like to amend the agenda under the council action. For the approval of purchase agreement for 201 West Front Street and the adjacent parcels.
So this is a new item, completely new?
Uh, yes, it is, it's an item regarding approval for a purchase agreement.
Could it be repeated again so that I can? Catch it for the minutes, so please, one more time, Councilman Lamar.
Yes, I'd like to amend the agenda under the council action for the approval of a purchase agreement. For 201 West Front Street and the adjacent parcels.
Thank you.
I will second that.
There's a motion from Councilman Lamar, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine to amend the agenda by adding the items stated under council action. Mr. Buds, any, any questions on the motion?
No questions, Your Honor.
Very good. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamar.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Next item, please.
The next item would be citizen comments not related to an agenda item.
Thank you, and if there's, so we have, do have some attendees, I see there's a hand up already, the regarding comments. Be mindful of the kind of the rules of the chamber and our Zoom of three minutes, and as you identify yourself and your jurisdiction of residence, and. Receive from there.
Uh, Richard Mika, Monroe, Michigan. Your Honor and respected council members. The woke activists in our community are being exposed for what they are, users. They have used the indigenous people to do their bidding. Hopefully, all of you have seen and read the articles by a member of the Custer family. There is no excuse for the kind of behavior we are witnessing today.
Mr. Mika?
Yes.
If you wait a second, you know, I, I don't know that all of council has read the, the series that was in the Monroe News, if there's items related to the article specific. You know, the median for that would be through the Monroe News, through an either an editorial page or opportunity for writing. If you're stating your, your information or your position on items is fine, but please, if there's, if there's commentary tonight regarding the. Articles in Monroe News, the, I would suggest that we write articles to the Monroe News or editorials for those comments. I don't have a problem with referencing this there, but I don't want to get into discussions about what was said in there, because it's. It's, it's, that's what the Monroe News, I can't write them, and the articles that are there to be responded there specifically that, but I'm sorry, Mr. Mika, please continue.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, I appreciate that. Native people, a long time ago, provided us with the answer, and that is called to heal all nations. You will be hearing more about this as we begin to push back against the anarchy that has descended on our community. Thank you, Your Honor, thank you, respected council people.
Thank you, Mr. Mika, and I, the reference wasn't the, my issue, the, or I should say, the issue is, you know, if there's going to be specific commentary to the article. I would think that the Monroe News would be appropriate. Are there other comments from those present here this evening? Not related to an agenda item.
Um, Your Honor, I have several letters to read, although I do see another hand up.
Okay, do you, your choice, you want to read or, or speak? We have a hand up, we should take it.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that, and then I have four total right now to read.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll pull in.
Thank you. Call, welcome, and. Please identify yourself and jurisdiction.
Um, hi, Cole, City of Monroe. Um, so, this evening, I'd just like to invite council to take a brief moment to collectively consider. Our shared humanity, it's a little bit different than where I normally go, but if this were an interactive kind of seminar, I'd invite you to close your eyes, or slow your breathing, or consider your body. But we'll consider our breaths that we take, we'll consider our aches and our pains, we'll consider our flesh and our bones, and we'll consider our deep. And the deep and longevity, the wide universe that we all share together. I feel like, a lot of times when we have these meetings, history can feel like it's a whole other world. And in many ways, with regards to science, or, you know, our knowledge of other countries, it may as well have been. But there are some things that we still have in common with every person from the past, that is, that of bodily pain and pleasure, of our hopes and our dreams. Of a desire for safety, security, love and health, and I feel like when we talk about the battles of the past, we're, we have to remember, we're talking about human beings, like you and I. They had families, they had dreams, they had fear, and they felt pain. They had happiness, they had love, and they just wanted to live their lives. So when we talk about things like genocide, we must consider at the core of our humanity, what that truly means, and what that looked like, or what that felt like. And we can debate a statue all day, and it's worth doing, but it's definitive and known that Custer was well-known as a killer of Native Americans. He decimated some peaceful populations of families that were living on land, that was stolen from them, and then quote gifted back as a safe territory. He had dubious past with slavery and with civil rights, despite the fact that he's being championed as a great Civil War hero. And so what I'm asking is, don't, don't let yourselves become numb to the lives that were lost to Custer and his men. Don't let your human connection to people drown in the politics of your own positions. Real human beings like you and I were tortured and killed, and consider if this was your family, or if this were you, would you want your descendants to have to look up at the man who did this? Or just go to school with, you know, honoring a man who did this? Would you want to live in or visit a city who calls him a hero? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cole. Clerk, do I see another hand?
Yes.
So I think it's, I think it's Holly, and Holly, your introduction, please, name and jurisdictional residence, please.
Yes.
Yep.
I'm Holly T. Bird, I am a resident of Anishinaabe Territory, here in Michigan. I'm an indigenous person, I'm an indigenous woman, I'm from San Felipe Pueblo, but I've grown up here. Um, I've lived in the Detroit area for most of my life, but I currently live up in the Odawa Territory of the Anishinaabe Territory here that we all reside in. And. With respect to the, the council's. Discussion about looking for an expert to find. To do some studying on, on General George Custer, and I hate to even call him a general, but I wanted to give you some, some things to think about, and as an indigenous person growing up here. How. How his representation in our communities has affected me and my family. For one, you know, as a, as an indigenous person, we've grown up hearing the stories and seeing this person hailed as a hero. And I actually know the, the grandchildren of the people, some of the people that were killed by Custer. I, I know. The, the young women that, that are, you know, only thirty years old now. Whose grandparents were killed, and great-grandparents were killed in some of these things. There, there is a definite effect of having to see this name, and this, this. Person hailed as a hero in any community. Um, it's, it's very hurtful, it's very painful. Um, I have to explain to my children, it's sort of like having, let's say my daughter had been assaulted by a person in our community. Sexually assaulted, and that because of that person was felt by other people to have done some good for the community, they erect a statue in, in their honor. And then she has to walk by that all the time, to be constantly reminded of the pain and suffering on the people, or on herself. This is how this affects our people, and so I wanted to just sort of spread out the idea of, you know, who he is, so that we can all understand. Number one, he graduated last in this class of thirty-four cadets at West Point, and according to historic historians racked up one of the worst records of personal conduct ever accumulated in the military academy. Two, he went west to avoid censure by, by President Grant, who didn't like him. Uh, because of his, his behavior. Uh, three, when he, when he went out west, he drifted from his post and went AWOL. So he was known in the, in the military for going AWOL, he was not a hero. Next, he violated treaties, these treaties that forged a sacred trust between the US government and indigenous tribes in that area. He violated those treaties because of his own sort of personal quest for. I don't know, notoriety. And then he killed two hundred and sixty-seven people that weren't even indigenous, in the, in this really bad attempt to rain terror down on a village of people.
Holly.
He was not a fine person, he wasn't a good person, and so I don't understand keeping. Symbols of him out there, when he, when he wasn't a good person to begin with, so I understand, I think time is just about up.
Yeah, well, you're at three minutes and thirty seconds, so it is, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Alright. Clerk, I see no other hands at this time.
Um, nor do I, so I can begin the letters if you'd like.
Please do.
Um, alright, I'm gonna begin with Katie Beth Davis. Uh, my name is Katie Beth Davis, La Pleasant, La Pleasance Road 48161, and I'm formally requesting that the renaming of the Custer Airport be placed on the agenda for the next city council meeting. I do, I do believe that the city council has taken into account the seriousness of what General Custer represents, and I think she meant to say, I do not, but I'm reading it as it was written. Represents to members of the Black Indigenous People of Color communities by obtaining an RFQ for the statue. Oh, no, she probably does mean, I hope, I do, I'm sorry. I hope the city council will also take into consideration, the City of Monroe owns and is responsible for the airport, but does not limit its use to only City of Monroe residents. I'm requesting that the airport be named for Alexander Jefferson, who is a retired US Air Force officer, who was born in Detroit, Michigan, he was one of the Tuskegee Airmen, and also a redtail, he has been awarded the distinguished flying cross air medal, the congressional gold medal, and a purple heart. In nineteen ninety-five, he was enshrined in the Michigan Aviation Hall of Fame, General Custer or Custer Farms, or the Custer family name has nothing to do with aviation, thank you. And these will be, if it has not already been, it will be forwarded to council members, and a copy is available at the clerk's office for anyone who wishes to review it.
Thank you.
Alright, the next one I have is from Greg Druddy, and, and he lives on Lafayette Avenue de Lafayette, here in Monroe, and. Your Honor, if, this is a longer letter, so if I start to run long, please interrupt me, alright?
Yes.
As a longstanding citizen of the, of Monroe for over thirty years, I generally advocate the non-adversarial approach as always the best step, first step toward good relations. Perhaps you were just too busy to knock on my door and engage in a straightforward cordial conversation during your so-called inspection of my property. Or maybe the mission and core values contained on the city's website regarding the highest level of professionalism, fairness, and integrity to do every job were never intended to be taken literally. However, as a taxpaying citizen, I personally expect better from government servants. Nonetheless, this serves to respond in kind to your municipal civil infraction dated Thursday, April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, but actually received today, Monday, May third, twenty twenty-one. You charged me with a violation of blight ordinance section two ten dash two A, two front yards, you cite subsection two C, which expressly refers to recreational equipment, including but not limited to bicycles, toys, and outdoor furniture located in any front yard for a period longer than two consecutive days. Your communication also provides that any fine will be waived if the blighted condition is abated or corrected within five days of the date of your letter. That five-day period expires tomorrow, and I have unalterable prior commitments, thus having one day to comply is both unreasonable and contravenes due process. This is a faulty procedure that should be corrected. As you should already know, the stated purpose of the blight ordinance is to protect, promote, and provide for the health, safety, sanitation, and general welfare of the citizens of Monroe. And to suppress disease and contamination by preventing, eliminating, and removing blight and/or blighted conditions within the City of Monroe. The photo in your citation clearly illustrates that a small trailer motorboat is in my driveway, not in the actual yard. The boat is neatly safely and securely located in front of my garage on an intermittent basis. Plainly, there is no restriction of sidewalk usage, no impact on health, safety, sanitation, or general welfare of the citizens, and no disease or contamination, to argue otherwise is simply irrational. As an original resident of Frenchman's Bend, I've always taken pride in our prestigious neighborhood. Your attempt to portray a small boat occasionally parked in front of my garage with the spirit and intent of blight is simply flawed and strange credulity. No recreational equipment, bicycles, toys, or outdoor furnitures are placed or located in my front yard, my residence is not an eyesore, nor is there any deteriorated or blighted condition. The express provisions of subsection two B requires that front yard shall be maintained with trimmed grass or other trimmed ground cover, and free of debris and significant accumulation of leaves. My front yard is properly maintained and has been in compliance for over thirty years. Moreover, the very terms of the ordinance coupled with common sense direct a reasonable person to differentiate, differentiate between a front yard grass and driveway concrete. Simply stated, I know of no rational person who mows, trims, edges, fertilizes, breaks, thatches, or irrigates the driveway. Again, there's absolutely no blighted condition in my front yard or in my driveway. The ongoing, the ongoing global pandemic must be of utmost concern to all Michigan residents. Monroe County is currently a major hotspot for both COVID nineteen and its UK variant, with increasing viral spread, positive test results, and hospitalizations. I'm a senior citizen making every attempt to comply with all proper government protocols, policies, and directives. Not only do I protest your assertion, I question your rationale, especially during these critical and dangerous times. Further, I ask the following questions, is the blight ordinance being fairly and equally, equally enforced across all city neighborhoods? Are such narrow and technical applications of the ordinance being aggressively or selectively enforced, and how many blight citations have been issued in the last three years to city residents? Please provide detailed and specific answers. In closing, I'm formally requesting you immediately rescind the civil infraction in writing and expunge it from all city records. Should you disagree, please advise at once of the proper protocol to officially appeal this matter, and that this citation be placed on hold until final adjudication is reached. I also request this letter be read into the record at tonight's city council meeting for immediate consideration. Your prompt attention is appreciated, respectfully, Gregory Druddy. And again, this will, um, can be forwarded to council, and it will be on record in the city clerk's office.
Thank you, I know Mr. Pasto and others received that email, and I know there'll be follow-up, so your other letters, oh, Mr. Pasto, did you have a comment at all, or?
Other than just, I will follow up on it, I know that, you know, that sometimes, you know, recreational vehicles, even well-maintained properties, they're out front, can be a challenge and. Understandable, you know, with some of his frustration, unfortunately, you do one, you do for all, and, you know, it's one of these darned if you do, darned if you don't, regarding the blight enforcement, and so. You know, at the end of the day, our desire is just to have compliance with it, it's not about the citation or the fine, and so, you know, we'll try, we'll reach out to, uh, Mr. Druddy and see if we can find some, some amicable resolution to it.
Thank you, Vance, I know that Mr. Druddy's on, so he'll be look forward to that contact, thank you. Clerk, Treasury, you have a, a other letter?
I do, I believe that Mr. Buds has some comments before I proceed.
Oh, Mr. Buds?
Good evening, Your Honor and Council, I am aware and have been in contact with the clerk's office about a couple of communications that were received today. And a couple of them are, I'll say, challenging from my perspective, in that they appear to be part of a, an effort to subscribe the clerk's office to an automated messaging delivery service. Uh, that appears to be, I'll say, organized by those with common. Uh, that appears to be, um, I'll say organized by those with commentary regarding the customer matter. And I, I don't, um. The substance of this doesn't matter. It's more a mechanism of delivery of messaging. And certainly in light of the pandemic, we've made every effort to make, uh, public comment available through electronic communication. To the clerk's office in advance of the meeting. Um, however, I will say I have, uh, difficulty with a process by which the clerk's office was subscribed to something that the clerk's office did not. Subscribe to for purposes of messaging. Uh, and so two of those messages came through. Uh, in, uh, I'll say honor of our obligation to participate in open meetings and to allow public comment. We're going to, uh, have the clerk read those messages into the record. However, I have communicated with the clerk's office about unsubscribing to that list and sending the organizer of that. I'll say processor application, uh, a message regarding that and, uh, the decision to unsubscribe. That does not in any way mean that we don't want public comment. It's a concern over the automated nature of that. And I will say it also had an indication on it that it could be edited by a third party that was not the apparent, um, submitter. Of the comment. And so for all of those reasons, there was concern as to the validity and process that was used in those communications. Uh, but as always, direct, uh, communication with the city as, uh, has been indicated and used in the past is certainly. Uh, always available for those public comments. And I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns regarding that.
I don't see any hands up from council, so maybe we go with the letters and then, uh, and then all that communication back. Maybe there was opportunity for that communication later, the clerk's office or your office, I think would be appropriate. Thank you.
All right, so I'll read, I'll read the first one. It's from Valerie, um, Mikeo, uh, lives on Raisenville Road on M fifty. Please read this aloud at the Monroe City Council meeting. My name is Valerie Mikeo, and I would like to say that I feel the statue of General George Armstrong Custer should be moved. From its location in downtown Monroe to somewhere more historically relevant like a museum. All right, and that will be on file in the clerk's office. Um, the second one is from, I believe it's from Stacy Greenberg, Sue St. Marie, Michigan. Dear Monroe City Council, I've read Chip Custer's opinion piece in the Monroe News recently, the inconvenience of truth. And it has sparked me to write you in regards of why it's especially important to detest Custer loudly. Although I respect Chip Custer's affinity for his relatives. I think it's fair to say that much has transpired since the unveiling of Custer statue in nineteen ten, such as, one. White supremacists flock to Lieutenant Colonel Custer as a fellow comrade. There is a Proud Boys chapter in Monroe that rally around Custer statue to preach and protest that white people are superior and all others are inferior. Two, white supremacists justify their actions by comparing themselves to Custer. History shows the Custer went AWOL, broke treaties between the United States and Native Americans, slaughtered villages of women and children. Raid their lands and take whatever he wanted for his own personal gain. It's been heavily reported that Custer was a pure failure. He was insubordinate, careless, a disrespectful underachiever. But still managed to gain heroic stature for breaking rules, ruining people's lives, doing whatever he wanted, from raping a different woman every night to raiding an area for gold after being told not to. With no punishment. This is what certain people in Monroe view as something to be celebrated. This is encouraging people like the Proud Boys to do whatever they wish to minorities. Because nothing will happen to them. Maybe they even feel like they're doing the work others wish they could do, but are unable because of their career choice. Three, white supremacists justify what they're doing is sanctioned by city officials. Because in light of the actual facts, authorities fight to keep the legacy of George Armstrong Custer as a hero going through things like triumphant statues and Custer celebration weeks. All these people are fighting to keep a statue of a man that Native Americans have said over and over again offends them. Despite opinions from Custer's relatives that live far from Monroe and the people that think history will be erased if the Custer statue moves from downtown into a museum. And the people who applaud his disastrous military career, the inconvenient truth is that white supremacist activity as has risen as defined as domestic terrorism. We've seen these domestic terrorists perform illegal acts within Michigan. We have heard they, they spew their hateful words and attack citizens even within Monroe. By celebrating Custer, this is what is being condoned. Please stop celebrating George Armstrong Custer, Stacy Greenberg, Sue St. Marie, Michigan. And this will be on file in the clerk's office. Um, and then I do, I wanted to let you know, your honor, I have word that there may be some problems with the YouTube feed. Um, so I'm trying to check on that while we continue the meeting.
Very good. Um, moving forward, next item, please.
Um, the next item, uh, is under communication, item three, one, two, eight, twenty twenty, property tax report, Advalorm Property.
Thank you, um, Mr. Pastu or Clerk Treasurer Lavoy. Um, I know one of you be given a report regardless or maybe both.
If I may, your honor, uh, you know, Clerk Treasurer Lavoy and I talked a little bit about this in the past. Uh, she would provide, uh, the Clerk Treasurer would provide, uh, an annual report regarding collections, uh, after settling up with the county treasurer and. And this one in particular has a collection rate of about ninety-seven point seven percent, if I recall, which is very high. And the following communication is a, uh, a report on the collections for industrial facility tax, obsolete property and, and. Uh, payment in lieu of taxes. Um, and so that collection rate, uh, there is, uh, delinquency on the. Uh, obsolete, uh, property tax, uh, incentive, but by and large, uh, paid at a hundred percent. But it had been a report that just went directly to council and based on our conversation, we thought, you know, let's just start including that as a communication. For the agenda for the, the broader community to see.
Thank you. Uh, Clerk Treasurer, I know that comes from your office. Is there any follow-up comments? I appreciate the report and it gets detailed and speaks to the collection and the work you do as a clerk treasurer.
Well, thank you. Um, no, I don't really have anything to add. I, I appreciate, uh. City manager Pastu's, uh, suggestion that we move it from, traditionally it's been on the administrative report. I inherited that, uh, protocol. Um, and, um, have wondered a little bit about it and we just decided, as he said, to move it that way. Council will receive it officially and, um, residents and anyone else who cares to can certainly contact our office to receive a copy. Or go to Minute Trap, the website where our agendas are and they can see the documents there themselves.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item, please.
So the next item, um, since the city manager mentioned item three, one, two, seven, I'll just move on to public hearing. Public hearing, item three, zero, nine, two, public hearing, one thousand turns, Turnus Drive. Industrial facilities tax exemption to receive and review comments. There are no comments on file in the clerk treasurer's office on this matter.
Thank you. At this time. I'll open the public hearing regarding item three, zero, nine, two, regarding one thousand turnus drive industrial facilities tax exemption. Mr. Pastu, I know we're gonna take comments. Did you, I, I, I might have missed here or stepped forward too quickly, um. Comments from administration, Mr. Green about, uh, some background?
If I could just get Mr. Green to provide us just a, a brief background with the, uh, the industrial facility tax, uh, application.
That'd be wonderful. And then we can also, uh, take any comments during the public hearing as well afterwards. Mr. Green, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Pastu. Earlier this year, Backyard Products LLC, uh, who has been a longtime, uh, commercial and industrial resident and citizen. Uh, in the city of Monroe submitted an industrial facilities tax exemption application. And this was based on a proposed addition to the north side of their existing facility on Turnus Drive. Uh, it is actually a sixty-three thousand square foot addition valued at more than three point two million dollars in new investment. One of the things that we always look at with IFTs, the industrial facilities tax exemption request. Is not only the amount of the investment, but also whether there's job creation, uh, uh, involved in that. Or job retention. In the case of backyard products, this, uh, addition. Will help retain, uh, twenty-five to forty temporary seasonal jobs. As well as creating somewhere between fifteen to twenty new jobs. Uh, and of course, the jobs, we look into, uh, the jobs and the pay scales meet those requirements that we are typically looking for. And they're called out by, by the city and by the state. Um, on March twenty-fifth of this year, the E D R C met to review the proposed application. The recommendation by the planning department to the E D R C was to approve the recommendation for a twelve-year tax abatement. Um, again, that, um, that recommendation was based on the amount of investment. It was based on the job retention and job creation, but it also looked at the past history. Of backyard products in the city of Monroe, and they've had just really an exemplary track record. With the city and, and their work here. So after that meeting of the E D R C, the E D R C passed a motion recommending approval of the twelve-year tax abatement, which is before you tonight. So you have upcoming a public hearing and following that, a resolution for your consideration and action.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And, um, I know we're in the public comments, so I'll, I'll see if there's any public comments at this time. Regarding item three, zero, nine, two. Any comments from the public? Seeing no comments, I'll close the public hearing, but I'll take any comments that might come from the council members as well, uh, during this topic. You know, I, I, I wanna make just a brief comment. I think that, uh, you know, as Mr. Green stated, well, what, what, um. Backyard products has achieved and where they're at today, but also I've noticed they, they've had job fairs, they've had signs and postings for job opportunities. And then, uh, while I don't know the current status, uh, the, if there's those that interest, it may be interested, I would recommend that you see if they're still opening. Regarding that here in our community, because I know they're looking for, uh, uh, local workers as well. So I just make my comment is, is kind of, uh, in relation to the, uh, the public commentary time. There's no other comments. Clerk, uh, next item, please.
Um, I want to just give an update on the YouTube stream. It's apparently YouTube itself is having problems. I was able to witness a report that shows that there, there's getting, they're getting a high volume of complaints and that sort of thing. So it's not, it's not our feed, but we are aware of it. And, um, if somebody on here is, knows of someone who's. Trying to, uh, witness the meeting, uh, the access information is on the city's website on the calendar of events. So somebody, if they want to participate that way, they're able to. The next item is under council action, item three, zero, eight, two, resolution to adopt industrial facilities tax exemption for one thousand turnus drive.
Thank you, um. Well, we've had the presentation, Mr. Pastu. Is there, uh, any further comments regarding this? If not, it's up for council action and, um.
I have nothing else, your honor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmore, I'm sorry, I missed the, the hand in the corner.
I'm gonna make a motion, your honor. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed resolution. Uh, recommending approval of a twelve-year industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. For Backyard Products LLC located at one thousand Turnus Drive in the city of Monroe. And rec staff to forward the resolution and related materials to the state of Michigan Department of Treasury.
Motion by Councilmore, more support by Councilman Felder on item three, zero, eight, two, the resolution to adopt the industrial facilities tax exemption. For one thousand, one thousand turnus drive. If there's no further comments from council. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lomar?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Vining?
Yeah.
Jermani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, the next item is item. Three, one, two, four, Brownfield Bond Full Faith and Credit Pledge Amendment.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pastu, I think there's a little, uh, information on you and maybe Mr. Sell, um, or Mr. Cochran might have some information, please.
Well, thank you, your honor. I'm gonna have Mr. Sell do the introduction for, uh, the, the Brownfield, uh, bond issue for the Leighton Boy site.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, you are being requested tonight to approve a resolution amending. Uh, a resolution that you adopted in June of two thousand twenty. Uh, you'd be amending the resolution pledging the city's, uh, full faith. Limited tax, full faith and credit in support of the Brownfield Authority's, uh, tax increment bonds. Uh, the main change that you're being requested to make is to increase the amount of bonds that are, uh, you're pledging your. Credit towards from two point three million up to three million. So last week, uh, at a special meeting of the Brownfield Authority, they, the Brownfield Authority actually adopted a revised or amended. Uh, bond authorizing resolution. That's, that's their job in this process. The city council's job in this process is to basically stand behind the bonds and, and pledge it, pledge its credit. Towards the bonds. Um, so that's what you're being requested to do tonight in, in an increased amount up from two point three million to three mil, three million again. Um, the pledge is in place in case the, the bonds are intended to be paid from tax increment revenue. From the, the former lazy boy site that isn't, is in the process of being developed. Um, if those tax increments didn't come in an amount, uh, large enough to pay the bonds, that's where the city's pledge would come in. Or we would have to step in and, um, potentially make a bond payment. Uh, we're asking for the increase to three million. Uh, there was a memo in your packet that kind of explained some of the costs, but. Um, the, the bond proceeds are meant to reimburse the city for, number one, the demolition of the site and some of the environmental costs. But we're now in the phase of doing some site improvements there. And, uh, we're still in the process of determining the actual final cost of many of those site improvements. Um, but at a meeting where city staff met to talk about those items, we estimated they might come to an amount of seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, those amounts plus some of the bond issue costs, plus what's spent already would bring us to a bond issue of about two point six million dollars. Um, we're actually asking for three million, uh, as a, as a small contingency. Um, in case we get some estimates that are a little higher than what our own estimates are. Uh, the final bond issue amount does have to be set by about May seventeenth. The goal is to get the bonds issued in the month of June. Uh, to date, the city has fronted all the costs for the demolition and the design and the site improvements that have gone on so far. And, uh, that, that is, has either been paid out or encumbered in the amount of about one point seven million dollars. And in order to keep the finances of the city's capital project fund in order and out of a deficit by the end of the fiscal year, the bond issue really needs to happen by. By the end of June. So, uh, that, that's what you're being asked for here tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Mark or Vince can fill in anything else I may have missed there.
Thank you, Mr. Sell. I'll see if there's any questions from council. I know we received the correspondence and the detailed information in our packet as well. Any questions from council? Um, seeing. Councilmore, that.
Just gonna make a motion, your honor.
Okay, hold on, please, and I'll see if Mr. Pastu has anything further.
No, I don't think so, your honor, uh, other than, uh, you know, we, uh. Not with the subcommittee reviewed the status, uh, with, uh, the last week. And I think, uh, this just gives us enough cushion that if we need to, then, uh, we can proceed without issuing another cost of a bond issue. Uh, in, which is a, is a high, you know, fixed cost with it, so.
Okay, very good. Councilmore.
Thank you, your honor. I make a motion to adopt the attached amendments to resolution pledging limited tax, full faith and credit. In support of the city of Monroe, Brownfield redevelopment authority tax increment bonds, series twenty twenty.
Support.
So motion by Councilmore, more support by Councilman Whitman on item three, one, two, four, the Brownfield Bond Full Faith and Credit Pledge Amendment as stated. There's no further questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lomar?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Jermani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Clerk, excited.
The next item is three, one, two, two, Central Fire Station demolition replacement of selected vendor.
Uh, Mr. Pastu?
Uh, thank you, your honor. Uh, we're looking at, uh, replacing the vendor that was approved by council about six weeks ago. I'll let Mr., uh, uh, Lewis talk a little bit about, uh, that and, and where we are with the project and, and a little bit of the rationale of which I obviously support.
Very good.
Good evening, uh, honorable mayor and council, Patrick Lewis, Director of Engineering and Public Services. I'll be brief on this one. Uh, most of the information is contained in the fact sheet, but just kind of as an overview. Um, we, a- as you know, a couple of months ago, we had, uh, accepted bids for the demolition of the old central fire station at seventy-five Scott Street. And, uh, we had a, a fairly tight bid spread. Sixty-three thousand was the low bidder, uh, Thomas Trucking of Monroe, actually over on Cooper Street. And the second little bidder was sixty-five thousand to Sal and Bean Trucking and Excavating of Dundee. And they've done quite a bit of, uh, underground work for us. Actually, there's a contract award for them on tonight's agenda as well. Um, and some demolition, they did a large package for us in two thousand eighteen. So, um, we, we left the decision at the time up to council, uh, both, we felt both contractors would be capable of doing the work. Uh, Thomas didn't have a large, uh, commercial two-story in their, in their repertoire, but we, uh, wanted to work with them and give them an opportunity to do that. Uh, in the process of getting the contract documents around the last few weeks, um, trying to schedule a pre-construction meeting, uh, we had received word that. Um, from the vice president, uh, who had been, uh, communicating with our staff that, uh, he had fallen ill himself with COVID. As had the majority of their staff. Um, one of the, one of the challenges, of course, with, uh, with Thomas is they're not a large, uh, vendor that's done a lot of work before. Um, so we had a, had a long chat and, uh, he, he expressed that he'd still like to work with the city, but he totally understood if we felt we needed to go in a different direction. And I would say since we're at two months out from the. And I would say since we're at two months out from the award, uh, we, we probably should, uh, move on to the second little bidder at this point. I, I did want to point out though, this is no failure on their part to perform, uh, just that, uh, by virtue of being a smaller business, they, they don't have the, the flexibility to recover. Uh, quickly. And, and what I don't want to do is see them, uh, in a situation where their first project with the city starts out a little rocky because they're trying to make up ground and they're trying to constantly push to stay on schedule. So, uh, we felt particularly at this point, because the bid spread was very small, um, and Sal and Bean did express that they are, they're willing to take the project on for the original bid. And, uh, they may even make that June thirtieth completion date they're going to try. Uh, I, I, I feel like the original reasons we wanted to get this down, uh, by midsummer, um, so we could pursue economic development opportunities for that parcel are still valid. So we think at this point, we are recommending that the original contract be, be withdrawn, rescinded, whatever the word you want to use there. Uh, it has not actually been executed by the city, so that's, uh, actually fortunate. Um, and we believe that there, they have no issues with that. Um, like I said, we haven't hounded them with, uh, having, uh, been stricken with illness the last couple of weeks, but. Uh, we, we feel we've got an amicable solution and, uh, we're, we certainly would like to work with them in the future, but, uh, we think it's prudent to move on with, with the award to Sal and Bean Trucking.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, I'll look to council, see if there's any questions for Mr. Lewis or Mr. Past two. If not, um, I think it's, uh. Motion being ordered, Councilman Lamore.
Uh, not making a motion, just a comment, your honor, just, uh, I, I really would love to work with Thomas and, and, and I like working with fellow city, uh, businesses. And we like to give them the business and I, 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 as much as we're disappointed and, and they're not being able to follow through with this, uh, in a timely manner. I want to invite them to keep on, uh, trying to work with us in the future. Uh, that's the only comment.
Yeah, I agree. Absolutely. That's, uh, I, I look forward to that opportunity and I think that's one of the reasons council was a close bid. Um, and the other had much experience with us. This was the opportunities that present themselves to work with the city and us to work with them. And I look forward to that opportunity in the future, you know, if this progresses as is being, uh, recommended. There's no other comments. Uh, we have an item for, uh, council action and the motion being ordered.
Your honor.
Uh, as he goes to Councilman Felder, were you gonna?
I, I was, if, if Brian wasn't, but it's up to you.
Go ahead.
Um, I would, uh, move the contract for the central fire station demolition be awarded to Sal and Bean Trucking and Excavating Incorporated of Dundee, Michigan. The amount of sixty five thousand and a total of seventy five thousand dollars be encumbered to inclusive, include a fifteen percent contingency. That the previous contract with Thomas Trucking Services Incorporated and the amount of sixty three thousand dollars be terminated and that the mayor and clerk treasurer be authorized to sign contracts with Sal and Bean on behalf of the city of Monroe.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Moore on item three, one, two, two, the central fire station demolition as, uh, stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Jermani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
All right. Um, the next item is three, one, two, zero, twenty twenty one Water Main and Resurfacing Program Bid Award.
Mr. Past two, any introduction? And Mr. Lewis is still here as well.
Yep, but I think I'm gonna have Mr. Lewis talk about the, the bid, uh, for this, uh, this work, uh, for this summer. Patrick?
Thank you.
All right, I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. You know, I love talking about construction and could do it all night. Um, but this is, this is the second of our two, I'll say, large pieces for this year's construction. Um, back in, as I'll preface this with always with these items, uh, back in November, uh, our voters gave us their. Gave faith in us and approved that two mil street tax, um, and we're trying to make that payoff in a big way early on. So this represents, we already awarded the concrete paving program contract back in February and work is underway for that. And, um, I was of course happy to report that that one was, uh, quite a bit under budget. And I'm also happy to report that the second piece of this, which is the, we combined the water mains and the, uh, asphalt resurfacings, most of which are, are curb, full curb replacements as well. Uh, or I should say the bulk of the value of the work is, is, uh, full curb replacement. And I'm happy to report that this one also was under budget, not quite as much as the concrete, uh, paving program. Uh, I know Mr. Leroy isn't happy because his piece is slightly over budget, um, which makes the streets even more. And so. Um, I guess I'd like to say that we're, we, we got four and a half million dollars worth of street work that we planned for this year is going to be done for about four million. So, uh, we saved about half a million dollars by moving aggressively, getting bid packages together and I'll, I'll say this publicly, I can't thank my team in the engineering department enough for their assistance in getting us there. It's been, been, uh, very much appreciated that we've been able to pull this off. So I, I happily bring to you a contract award to Sal and Bean Trucking and Excavating as the previous one was. For the, uh, for the two thousand twenty one Water Main and Resurfacing Program, the, uh, the, the centerpiece of this, I, if you will. Uh, which I'm sure you'll be hearing a lot about because it's the longest piece. It's, uh, about two thirds of a mile is the Riverview Avenue. Uh, it's from Elm to Scottwood. That is Water Main. We're gonna be doing directional boring. And, uh, full curb replacement and resurfacing. So that's, that's the largest piece of this, but then we have a number of other, uh, projects in there as well. So. I won't continue on too much longer. Most of the rest of us in the fact sheet, but, uh, with this contract award, we will have the vast majority of the city's contract work. Um, for streets and underground under contract and, uh, happy to say we're doing that early in the season and we, hopefully we can keep that. Keep that train rolling for future years by, by advancing. I do think we save quite a bit of money by being on the front end of the, uh, construction season.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. I'll see if there's any questions from, or, uh, from this council. Seeing none, um, Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, your honor. Uh, I'll be the first one to thank the water and the engineering departments for their diligence in this. Uh, I, I think the community is gonna be pleasantly surprised when they see all the work that's done this year. Uh, our streets are in dire need of, of, of work and, and you guys are, are getting it done. I, I really appreciate it myself. So, thank you. And with that being said. I'd like to make a motion that a contract for the two thousand twenty one waiting water main and resurfacing program be awarded to Sal and Bean Trucking and Excavating Incorporated. The amount of two million, two hundred and eighty two thousand, four hundred and fifty five dollars and twenty cents, that a total of two million, five hundred and ten thousand dollars be encumbered to include a ten percent contingency. That the mayor and city, city clerk treasurer be authorized to execute the contracts on behalf of the city and that the director of finance be authorized. To transfer a hundred forty two thousand, two hundred dollars from the waterfront reserves and move budgeted funding in the water fund forward. From the two thousand twenty two to the two thousand twenty one fiscal year in the amount of forty four thousand dollars.
Second. So motion by Councilwoman Moore, supported by Councilman Felder on item three, one, two, zero, the two thousand twenty one Water Main and Resurfacing Program Bid Award. Nothing further. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Vining?
Yeah.
Jermani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
And, and your honor, if I, if I may, I would be remiss if I didn't include Mr. Leroy in that, uh, my kudos to the team. I, he is included in our engineering design team. So I wanted to make sure he knew how much his input in the package was very much appreciated. I couldn't do it without him. So I apologize. I didn't say that earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. And I think, uh, council, I think the residents clearly see that knowing between the water, wastewater department through your, uh, Barry Leroy's leadership and in, uh, in engineering through your leadership. That these projects are done collectively together and there's not a, a waste of having to do things twice over. And that shows in the, uh, coming under the, uh, proposed possible, uh, bid cost looked at and doing it early. And again, thanks to the residents. Clerk, next item, please.
Um, the next item is the additional item, um, the purchase agreement for two zero one West Front and adjacent property.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Past two, I don't know if there's any further. Our council, uh, asked places on the, uh, agenda for, um. Consideration and, uh, if not, um.
I could just have, uh, Mr. Captain provide just a, a brief introduction, uh, for, for our, uh, community. I know we talked about it in a, uh, closed session.
That's right. I apologize. Thanks, Mr. Cochran.
Yep. Good evening, mayor, city council. Um, Mark Cochran, assistant to the city manager and economic development director. Um, for several years now, we've had, uh, great interest in watching, uh, the, the property in question at two oh one West Front Street. Along with the two adjacent properties, uh, to the south, um, that's been for sale for several years now. And we understand, uh, given the background, history of the site with its use as a, a former gas station, um, built, uh. Uh, almost, uh, eighty years ago or so, and also, um, with it being used previously as a, a rug cleaning facility. Um, there present some environmental challenges which, uh, makes it rather cost prohibitive to, uh, redevelop the site to reach its maximum and full potential. Um, part of the keen interest in the site is the fact it's got some very unique characteristics architecturally. Um, it's also on the gateway into the downtown, uh, coming from the west. And so, um, we'd like to be able to see the property. Uh, reused for, uh, some sort of commercial or restaurant or brewery enterprise in the downtown, uh, area. And so with that, we, uh, approached the Downriver Community Conference, Brownfield Consortium, uh, seeking funding to do some environmental investigative work. Uh, as we looked into the potential acquisition of the site, uh, and how we can assist with the redevelopment. Um, the environmental assessments came back with some environmental challenges that we know about, given its past, uh, historical use of the property. Uh, and so given those prohibitive costs, we do know, um, that, uh, with us being the city and the municipal government, we have access to, um, some grant funding that other, uh, private developers may not. Or, uh, may not have access to at the favorable conditions that we do, uh, such as interest and length of repayment and things of that sort. Uh, and so we've negotiated, uh, in full faith with the current property owner, uh, met with him last week and presented, um, the option that was discussed in closed session tonight to purchase the site for two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, we do know that there's some additional, uh, brownfield assessment work that we need to do, which we'll be discussing with our, our local brownfield authority, as well as the Downriver Community Conference. Uh, to address those issues and pave the way, uh, for redevelopment of that site and to help attract, uh. Uh, a new small business to locate there and, and help, uh, reduce the upfront, uh, redevelopment costs that would be otherwise prohibitive to them due to the environmental conditions of the site.
Thank you. Are any, uh, questions for, uh, Mr. Cochran or administration? Uh, Councilwoman Moore?
I just wanted to, uh, make sure of the purchase agreement price was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Is there any contingency amount in that or just two seventy?
No, sir, just two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Other comments or questions?
Just like to make a motion, your honor.
Yep, we'll see if there's any other comments from council. Seeing none, uh, Councilwoman Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the purchase agreement in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for two hundred, two oh one West Front Street and the adjacent parcels.
Support.
So motion by Councilwoman Moore, supported by Councilwoman Whitman on the, uh, item, um. Added to the agenda regarding the purchase of property at two oh one West Front Street. Any final comments or questions? Seeing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Uh, councilperson Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Vining?
Yeah.
Jermani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
All right. Um, so now, next item is the consent agenda and for approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read eight hundred and forty five thousand, two hundred and seventy nine dollars and fifty five cents. Eight, four, five, two, seven, nine, point, five, five.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda from council members? Seeing none, or is there any items on the consent agenda, those present with us this evening via our Zoom meeting, wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items be pulled by the public? Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Your honor.
Councilman Felder.
I would make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out and resolutions adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lamore, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, uh, recommendations carried out and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Jermani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
All right. Um, I have no further items, your honor.
Thank you. It is May, um, fifth month, so Councilwoman Lamore, any comments this evening?
Yes, sir. Thank you, your honor. Uh, not much here, but, uh. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to wish all of our mothers a happy Mother's Day this upcoming Sunday. Uh, without them, we could not be. So thank you for, for, uh, kindly being a mother. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Felder.
Uh, thank you, your honor. Um, it's certainly unfortunate to hear about, uh, a local firm that had, uh. Back out of a, a contract, uh, you know, it's, it's worth noting that as we undergo, uh. You know, as we're traveling through this, these COVID times, there's economic impacts within the community that are going to be felt. You know, regardless of any restrictions put on firms, just because people are, are still getting sick and even if everyone turns out okay. Uh, you know, that means that for, you know, for some time, you still can't go to work. It's still gonna shut a firm down and for a small business, I think it, it, it hurts particularly. Um, so, you know, as, as we get the numbers down, as we increase our vaccination efforts. Um, you know, that's, that's gonna help economically as well as the health of the community. Um, regarding some of the blight, uh, policy reviews that we were, uh, that we had, uh, comments on this evening, I think it's probably. It's probably appropriate to look at what we're doing and why, uh, just to ensure that the things that we're enforcing are worth enforcing. Um, and that we have a good reason to do it. Um, I spoke, uh, with, uh, Mr. Drudy, uh, this afternoon about his, uh, his issue. It, it sort of seems a fair criticism. That although residents are nominally given five days to comply with any, uh, blight reports that are provided, that that timeframe may certainly include the notification arriving to them in the mail. Giving the residents less time to comply with any, uh, proposed issues. Recent blight, uh, the recent light reports that just went out, um, it seemed very few had time to comply, uh, with the issues that were presented to them. Um, and especially if our intention is not to hand out fees, but actually promote adherence to the beautification and livability that the policy that the blight ordinance is attempting to contribute to. Then it's probably prudent that we adjust this timeframe to at least allow for postage, if not to increase it overall. So that's probably, you know, some things that we, you know, that are worth looking at, uh, later on. I know I have some other constituents who contacted me, know that I'm speaking with the departments about those issues to get those issues resolved for you. And hopefully that gives everyone an update on what's going on. So I look forward to having that conversation when we have the time to have it. I know that our dockets are certainly full at the moment.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Whitman?
Yes, I have two things. One, I noticed today. That the railroad is working on the railroad tracks at Front Street and at Elm. Do we know that they are not going to be closed at the same time or is it a one day thing or?
Sure, that's a good question. And I see Mr. Lewis is here. That's usually the point of contact they make, uh, whether it's timely notification or not. I know that Mr. Lewis stays on top of that. Uh, Patrick?
I'll do the best I can to answer that. Uh, last week I was included in a, in an email conversation with Janine Abar at the road commission where CSX rolled out their list of crossings, which was. News to me because I've been pestering them for the last several months to give me a date and all I get is cold patch. Um, they are planning on rebuilding both the Elman Front Street crossings sometime this summer. They originally planned to have them both down simultaneously. Um, they were doing the same thing in the county areas, closing Stewart Mall and LaSalle at the same timeframe. Janine promptly informed them that was not going to work on their end and I reiterated. Same for the city. I did not receive a response yet, so I'm surprised that they were beginning work on those. I was not aware of any closer, uh, full closures yet, but I will. Um, I will more vociferously pursue a response to that. We've made it clear in no uncertain terms, Elm and Front are not to be closed simultaneously for any reason. So, um, I'll try to, thank you for the heads up on that one because I did not make it over that side of town today, so I will report back when I hear something concrete.
I'm happy to report. I also have another question. I asked about this probably about six years ago. Um, but I just witnessed, um, elderly lady that slipped going down those steps next to the bridge and there's no railing. So, um, I've asked about it two or three times and I just want to remind. You that, that we really need, we're gonna get sued. If somebody slips and falls and gets hurt. So, um, it, and in the winter time, it's really, uh, dangerous.
Also, if you'd send, if you'd send the, uh, I think I know what you're referring to. If you get ahold of Mr. Past two and then make sure we know exactly which, uh, location. I, I, I think I know what you're talking about. And we'll see what.
White sewing center used.
Yep, yep. Okay, thank you. Yep, Mr. Pasto, I think you have a note on that or if there's any other comment.
And that's all that I have to report. I hope that all the ladies enjoy Mother's Day and that the men are wise. And not forget Mother's Day.
Councilwoman Vining.
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to bring up the naming and monument policy. I know we're having a lot of conversations about the custom monument, but. I did want to. Remind city manager and Mr. Green that. We had that conversation some time ago about having a process to. For citizens to be able to request naming streets or other things. And I hadn't heard anything back on that. So I just wanted to bring that back up.
I appreciate that. Like, I believe, Mr. Pasto and I had a conversation this morning about it. I think it's still up there and I know that we have, I think there's an opportunity to put together. Really a comprehensive review and I know that Councilwoman, you and I have chatted about it as well and I think there's a participation opportunity. From yourself and myself and 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 put it, get something to the council to review, maybe a structure. What that might look at and and so we do all the diligence of doing and vetting to make sure we are making proper. Reviews and recommendations to council on what we might do in the future. To solve things even decades later. So I appreciate that.
That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Germaine.
Thank you, your honor. So SMCC will have its first graduate of the Saint Andre Bissett. Open Doors Inclusion Program. Congratulations goes out to Jacob Gota. He's making history as the first graduate in that program and I applaud SMCC for having the program. And Mr. Gota, who's going to be graduating very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, your honor.
So I just have, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Lamore, almost what, almost, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm lying here, your honor. There was a couple of things I wanted to mention too, going back on Councilman Germaine's. Mr. Gota will be attending the University of Toledo next year as well to further his education. So I'd just like to add that on there too. It's an amazing thing. He's a great kid and he well deserving all the accolades. He is, he is fantastic. Also, I wanted to ask Mr. Lewis one little question regarding recharging stations and the possibility of putting. Maybe a couple in a parking lot downtown somewhere. That's all I have. I'm sorry to go out of line.
Before we get to Mr. Lewis, I'll say that wasn't long, probably a month or so ago, that one of the. Real makers was in town with electric vehicles and back when we did the 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 front street parking lot. Some of the conduit was put in for the opportunity for a couple of stations. I think there's even ways to expand on that. So, Mr. Lewis. Other than those two, I'm not sure if there's others, but just discussion in future, I guess. Any comments?
Sure. Well, anything's possible and mayor, you hit the nail on the head. We did have, although we didn't set up the the actual wiring or anything or designate specific locations. There, there is quite a bit of spare conduit in the northeast portion of that lot, kind of where the most popular area where everyone parks is. There was actually a conduit put in there for a future pay station if we wanted to charge for parking in that area, but that conduit could be. Readily used for like an electric charging station. So that's the, that's the one place where I know it to be set up. That's not to say that's the only place we could, we could do it. We will have a parking lot project coming up at City Hall here on the lot. Probably in twenty twenty two. You did fund it through the capital improvements program, so we can look to include that possibly. And any of the other parking lots, as long as you have access to power, you can do it. It's just, you know, the cost will be a little bit different depending on whether we have. Have the conduit in place. So it can be done anywhere. It's just a matter of council policy where if you'd like to pursue that. And you know how much you'd like to spend in each one of those locations. We can do it if you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis, and thanks for bringing it up, Councilman. I know that it's a movement forward and I think there's opportunities in. Whether it's through the Parking Committee and other discussions of where that might be able to put in stations to to meet those needs in the future. Thank you. So I guess a couple of items, I want to start by tomorrow, of course, I'll give Clerk Treasurer Lavoy the opportunity to talk about the. Kind of logistics and the expectations for the tomorrow for the election. Two important items that are before the community, you know, it's it's May, but not to say that there's, they're very important. When you talk about the the ISD Tech Village, but also the County Museum Village, which the 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 City Council has. Supported both and stated such through this, the importance of this for our community, importance of this for our youth and also. Of telling items and the initiatives that I think that the museum, the County Museum has done here. Just in the use of the militia since the last time it was approved. So I just, please make sure you vote. And I know that the Clerk Treasurer is the clerk treasurer and the staff are able to help if there's any questions. The blight process that was discussed, I appreciate the conversation. I know that Mr. Pasto, as I said, has on his list for follow up. You know, there's just some items that we probably need to look for and of course we have our new. Codes that we're going by, but that's not the pro, not the issue. I think it is, as Councilman Felder said, really about a process and timing. Because we do want to make sure that we're keeping on track of things. We want to give people the opportunity and the suspicion of time. So I appreciate the discussion there. I'm just going to make a last comment. I know that we've had a lot of discussion over the past months plus a while regarding the custom monuments. I just want to reiterate as as many know that are here and some that may. May not know that the council did make a decision regarding the next step forward and the in the RFQ that was sent out. And that the, I know there'll be follow up discussion this week and next of some of those returns. But the council made the decision to move forward and to find the the best way to facilitate this discussion. And to opportunities which will present them through the whoever may be selected. With the community's involvement with that as well. So I'll just leave it at that for for now. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy.
I have a couple of things. One, I wanted to jump in on that electric vehicle conversation. I think it'd be interesting to. As we replace the fleet of cars to to look into hybrid or electric vehicles, especially given the. Square miles of the city, it definitely lends itself to vehicles. And they're going farther and farther. I was always a skeptic and now as an owner of one myself, I. They're really nice. They're great. So I'm glad to see that that was brought forward tonight and that there's discussion about how we can move forward in that area. So with the elections tomorrow, they will be opening, we will be opening our precincts at seven AM as usual. All of our precincts will be open. So there, if you choose to vote that way, you should not have any issues. We also will be there until eight o'clock. So as long as you're in line by eight PM, you will be able to vote. If you have any questions about your voting location or anything like that, please feel free to either stop at the clerk's office or to give us a call. And then our AV ballots, for those of you that still are holding on to yours, those need to be returned to. The clerk's office by eight PM tomorrow. So you could, in theory, take it to your precinct and drop it off there. But really, I believe the best way to handle that is to, if you have an AV ballot and you want it to count, just bring it to City Hall. We will check it in while you're there to make sure the signature matches up and then it will be sent directly to the AP counting board. Other than that, there are sample ballots on display at City Hall. If you want to take a look at that, they'll also be available in the precincts. But it should be, it should be a great day and we have, we have fully staffed precincts. So I don't anticipate very long lines or much wait time at all. And you can, I should mention this because we do get people who want an absentee ballot. Yet they wanted them yet today as to mail them or they wanted them tomorrow and you can't get an absentee ballot tomorrow. On election day, you can only get one in case of emergency. So if you don't yet have an absentee ballot. You have to go to your precinct. If you want to register to vote, you can register to vote at City Hall. And we'll, we'll direct you then where you would need to go to vote. And that's all I have.
Thank you. If you could just, safety precautions on site with, you know, masks and whatnot.
Sure, I was about to say I'd forgotten a little bit about COVID, but I don't think anybody would believe that. So we are going to. Have the, ask that you stay six feet apart when you're in the the voting precinct. You are encouraged to wear a mask. Our, our election inspectors will be wearing masks, but voters can choose not to if if they want. If you forgot your mask, we will have masks available and they will be offered to you if you don't have one on. But again, if you, if if you choose not to, that's, that's up to you. I'm just kidding. I'm trying to think what else. And we'll be sanitizing and all of that. So and the the voting booths will be wiped down. After a person leaves the voting, exits the voting booth. So the only thing I ask is we'll have hand sanitizer at the front of the, at the entrance to the precinct. And I just ask that if you use it, just use a little bit because if it, if the residue is on the ballot. It could end up jamming up our machines. Hand sanitizer and tabulators do not play well together. So. But on your way out, certainly there will be a big container of hand sanitizer that that we encourage our voters to use.
Thank you. I know we want to, as you always said, everybody is able to and authorize the vote. We want everybody to 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 meet that. And just to make sure that they're, that know that we're doing it in a safe fashion and want all to attend. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Michelle a question?
Sure, Councilwoman Germaine.
Thank you, your honor. Michelle, for absentee ballots, do they have to go inside City Hall to drop them off? Or can they go out in the outside box still?
No, that's a really great point. And thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman. We in Michigan. Do not have any restrictions on on the the drop boxes. So you can drop that off anytime you want tomorrow. Up until, I would say, I would say after seven thirty, you might want to run it in. We'll be checking the box and there will be somebody out there right at eight o'clock. As well, but that's a good point. If you, if it's, you know, two o'clock in the afternoon or six o'clock in the evening and you, and you really just don't want to come in, that's fine. Just drop it in the drop box and we will, we will collect it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pasto.
I have nothing to add tonight, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you. So next is citizens comments. I see we do have a couple of hands up, just reminding. That citizen comments and I see three, but please state your name. Jurisdiction of residents and also three minutes. I see Mr. Judy is up, is that right?
That's correct.
Right. Greg, your comments this evening, introduce yourself and please speak. Oh, it might be muted. I heard a click. Mr. Judy, we, we're not hearing you, so we'll give you a second here, a few seconds. So Greg, we're not hearing you at this time. There might be a, just obviously an audio issue. So don't leave. And we'll come back to you as we will go through those that are in line to speak. And then please, we'll give you another opportunity. Clerk Treasurer.
I'm going to go in order of how they appeared on the screen. So the next is Mr. Mika.
Mr. Mika.
Good evening, your honor. Richard Mika, Monroe, Michigan. Your honor and respected council members. It appears that my commentary during the first public comment period this evening was abbreviated. With that being said, the misrepresentation so-called hysterical, hysterical, historical references you heard. This evening were meant to disparage a historical figure. Native people a long time ago provide us with the answer to all of these questions and it is called to heal all nations. You will be hearing more about this as we begin to push back against the anarchy that has descended on our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mika. Clerk Treasurer. Want to try the Mr. Egan and then come back to Mr. Judy.
All right, I'll do that.
Mr. Egan.
Brian James Egan, seven twenty O'Brien Street, City of Monroe, honorable mayor and city council. I just wanted to express our gratitude for the support and resolution for the Monroe County Museum System Village. And to echo your comments and some others, we do hope everyone gets out and vote tomorrow who hasn't. And we very much look forward to your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan.
Right. I'll try, I'll try Mr. Judy again.
Sure. Mr. Judy, can you hear us? And please go ahead. So Greg, we, we don't hear you, so there's an audio issue. I know that we had your. Email earlier and there was some conversation from the council members as well as the administration on that item. If, if there's some follow up and we can't get connected yet this evening, please feel free to send back a follow up correspondence. And I know that you and Mr. Pasto will be connecting. So thank you. Next one, next, next person, please.
Dr. Denton.
Dr. Denton, your comments this evening?
Graham Denton, Monroe, Michigan. I'm calling in to ask city council to just think back and listen. To what each side, if you will, is saying on these arguments. Continually you have ad hominem attacks by one side, which. You know, I was taught at university that you've kind of lost the debate in that case. And that's what you see from the side over and over. And so I kind of want you to see that where. We've tried to provide examples, including myself, giving presentations throughout the community. Just to educate the community on this issue because I understand that there's a, there's a gap there, but. Just see that others are attacking me just for attempting. To give an indigenous perspective on this. Doesn't that say something about all this? I don't think it's wise for Mr. Mika to speak for indigenous people. I would actually recommend that he turn the speakers up on his. On his computer because most of the people who were speaking today were indigenous and are represented by federal tribes of Michigan. I guess he doesn't realize, he hasn't been paying attention all this time that I'm indigenous myself. And that my tribe was slaughtered by Custer. So I'm not sure how I can use myself for my relatives, but that's the sort of information that's being given by the other side. Instead of defending Custer. So I just ask that you maybe recognize these patterns. And see perhaps that one side is attempting to educate. And discuss this, like was said, and you know, we've, you've even. You know, you've even given us a little kudos for that, right? How we've went about this. But and then you see another side constantly attacking, not the issue. Because I think they'll know when we take a look at this expertly, what's going to come out of this. And I think you guys know too. But I'm asking you to take a look at that because you in the end will have the final decision as we know. I appreciate you moving forward with the RFQ. I'm not sure if I understood it completely. Possibly more educational opportunities that would probably be good since. I think there's a lot of misconstrued rhetoric floating around out there that experts could. Could clear up for this community. Thank you again, as always. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Graham. Clerk Treasurer, go with the new person and then we'll give Greg a chance yet before we close.
Okay, there we go.
Nathaniel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Nat Spur, resident of Athens Township, the Pine Creek Indian Reservation. I'm a member of the Natawasi P here on Band of the Potawatomi, just south of Battle Creek. In the citizen comments earlier tonight, I heard somebody say that American Indians or Native Americans had been used. During this process. And I don't really know what they meant when they said that because this has been a team effort. And I don't really know what they meant, uh, when they said that because this has been a team effort. Um, Amer- American Indians, uh, members of federally recognized tribes of the state of Michigan, such as myself, working with organizations like Black Lives Matter, working with, uh, residents of the city of Monroe, other residents of Monroe County, uh, from the very beginning. Um, I've been involved in this, uh, although it's not as much as the other people who've spoken, um, before me tonight. But I've been involved in this process since July of last year. Um, you know, this is something we've done. Um, not only have we worked with you and, and I also want to thank the, you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council for including people like myself, um, in, into this argument because although I've never lived in the city of Monroe or Monroe County, um, the territory is originally Potawatomi Territory, um, that of my tribe. And, uh, one thing that I wanted to point out is we, um, you know, tribes such as mine, uh, signed nearly four hundred treaties with either the state of Michigan or the federal government during the seventeen hundreds and eighteen hundreds. And the reason why we did that was we were faced with the threat of genocide. Um, so we gave up almost all of our land in exchange for treaty rights to hunt fish, uh, gather food, uh, throughout those territories after we gave up the land. Um, and to us, that genocidal threat is what we see when we see the statue of, of George Custer i- in, in the city of Monroe. Um, you know, i- it, it, you know, I mentioned the treaty rights and it's, it's kind of, uh, an interesting time for me to bring that up because, um, the easement, uh, allowing the Line Five and the Straits of Mackinac to pump oil and natural gas throughout the, through the Stra- Straits of Mackinac, um, is, is being contested in, in, in both state and federal court right now. And for the first time ever, the state of Michigan used the treaty rights of four American Indian tribes, one of them being my own, the Nada Wasi Phee here on the Band of the Potawatomi, to make their argument to revoke that easement and the, and ultimately the goal is to decommission Line Five. Uh, that's going to be heard. And for the first time, tribal treaty rights were cited, um, by the state in their argument. Not the, not the argument of one of the tribes, but the states. So just as we've worked with everybody in this whole process and we've done it, um, in a good way, uh, we've done it throughout, uh, throughout history. So, um, McGwich, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nate. Thank you. Clerk Treasurer, if we could give, um, uh, Greg another opportunity here to see if we can connect. Mr. Judy, can you hear us? I can see now he's, Greg.
He's unmuted.
He is unmuted. It's just not coming through. Uh, I don't see anybody else on council that's, um, hearing. Well, Mr. Judy, I think we're going to have to connect, um, uh, tomorrow. Uh, I know we, uh, read your correspondence, your email, as well as some discussion. So look forward to following up tomorrow, uh, the city manager herself and, and maybe, uh, a correspondent. So thank you. See another hands. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Second.
Okay. I, Councilwoman Jermaine, you're, you're always delayed because you're like on a second behind. So I'm going to say the motion by his councilman Lomor, supported by Councilwoman Jermaine, uh, and to adjourn, uh, clerk, if you call a roll, please.
Um, Councilperson Lomor.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Jermaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes. Thank you all for your, uh, this evening, for all the sessions and, uh, input and discussion and including those that have, uh, joined us this evening. So thank you all. Stay safe. We'll see you soon.
Good night.
Happy Mother's Day.
Good night.
Yeah.